May fourteenth. And I now have a call to order, please. District one.
You know, it feels like we've been here all day. It's great to see so many people here. Thank you for joining us at our evening board meeting. And for those online, thank you as well. My name is Patrice Horstman and I am the supervisor for district one.
Thank you. District two. I'm Heronimo Vasquez, supervisor for district two and current chair. Thank you all of you for being here tonight. District three.
Good evening. Adam Hess, district three.
District four.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here, taking time off to be here at our board meeting. We've been here, I guess, all day. But Julie Begay, district four supervisor and current vice chair. Thank you.
District five.
Nina Fowler, district five.
Thank you. Now, can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. We will now have call to the public to allow for any comments from the public. Please note that issues presented during the call to the public that are not on the agenda cannot be acted on by the board of supervisors. For items not on the agenda, individual supervisors may ask questions of the public, but are prohibited by open meeting law from discussing or considering the item. Only the speaker who has been called upon is authorized to speak. To encourage and respect expression of all views, we are asking that there be no clapping, booing, or shouts of either approval or disagreement from the audience. We ask that all attendees and speakers be respectful, that this is a public meeting, and avoid using profane, derogatory, or insulting language. Individuals are limited to three minutes for their comments. We will take public comments from those in the room first, and then take public comments from those who have joined virtually. Clerk Daly will explain how the public can provide comment.
Thank you, Chair Vasquez. At this time, if someone would like to provide a public comment, we have public comment forms up on the table, orange forms by the door. You can fill that out and bring it to me. Also, we don't have a lot of people in the room right now, so you can also make your way up to the podium. If you've joined us virtually, you can hit the raise hand icon that will appear towards the bottom of your screen. If you hover towards the bottom, it looks like a hand. You click on that, that will raise your hand and notify us you'd like to speak. If you've joined the meeting by telephone, you can hit star nine, and that will raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak. And Chair Vasquez, I do have one comment form. Svi Shne, if you want to make your way to the podium, you'll have three minutes for your public comment. If you could please state your name and address for the minutes.
Hello, Chairman, board members. My name is Svi Shne. I live at 404 West Santa Fe Avenue, Flagstaff, Arizona, eight six zero zero two. For decades, Israel has been sending humanitarian aid treating Palestinians at Israeli hospitals, dropping leaflets, sending texts, and using roof knocks to avoid civilian casualties. The same measures are applied in the Gaza war. This includes the current operation of Rafa, where forty thousand tents were set up for Palestinians ahead of Israel's attempt to eliminate remaining Hamas operatives. Humanitarian aid continues to pour into Gaza, and evacuation zones are created as required. These humanitarian efforts are not consistent with claims of genocide, past or present. On May eighth, OCHA, the U.N. Office for the Coordination of Humanitarian Affairs, revised its casualty report. Claims of deaths of women and children in Gaza were reduced by half, from nine thousand five hundred down to four thousand nine hundred fifty-nine deaths for women, and from fourteen thousand five hundred down to seven thousand seven hundred ninety deaths for children to reflect more accurately registered deaths at hospitals. The total count was reduced from thirty-four thousand to twenty-four thousand. The IDF estimates that half of the total deaths are terrorists. Civilian deaths are a result of Palestinians being used as human shields while Hamas hides in schools and mosques and in civilian neighborhoods underground. The U.N. definition of genocide requires a clear demonstration of intent. With this in mind, Hamas is clearly guilty of a genocidal act of terror on October seventh, when twelve hundred Israelis were murdered in a barbaric way. The agenda of Hamas is to destroy Israel, Israelis, and the Jewish people as written in their nineteen eighty-five charter. Clear intent, yet this barbarism is overlooked. "From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free" is the battle cry of Hamas' intent upon the destruction of Israel from the Jordan River to the Mediterranean Sea. It is the same genocidal slogan chanted by activists at NAU protests and in downtown Flagstaff since October seventh. This slogan has been ruled as anti-Semitic by the House of Representatives. Hamas must be eliminated before a permanent ceasefire can take place. A ceasefire resolution would only serve to proliferate the false accusations against Israel and embolden the activists.
Thank you for your comment.
Again, if there's anyone that would like to provide a public comment, you can make your way up to the podium if you're here in person, or if you've joined virtually, you can hit the raise hand icon, or if you've joined by telephone, you can hit star nine and notify us you'd like to speak. At this time, Chair Vasquez, we have no hands raised and no additional comment cards.
Okay, we'll give it one more minute.
And there are no hands raised, Chair Vasquez.
All right, thank you. In that case, we'll move on to the next item. There's been a request to reorder the agenda and do item number six, consideration and possible action to approve a proclamation designating May nineteenth through May twenty-fifth as Public Works Week. Can we please have Public Works come up?
Thank you, Chair Vasquez and members of the Board of Supervisors. Like many of us, there's a lot of end-of-school-year activities, and one of our team members has a choir concert to attend for their child. So thank you for entertaining us and letting us go first. So this is probably the most exciting agenda item that I get to bring to the Board of Supervisors every year, and it's a proclamation to celebrate Public Works Week. And with me is Javier and Valerie to read the proclamation. And we chose these two to read it. One, because Javier is a new member of our team, and especially internally, he's our fleet supervisor, and he comes to us with a lot of experience and a really great attitude and personality. And we chose Valerie because she's kind of our unsung hero at road maintenance. And she helps keep the plows on the road and the trucks going, and helps all of our operators and people going, and we wanted to be able to recognize them. I'm going to turn it over to them at this time to read the proclamation.
Good evening.
Whereas public works services are integral part of our residents' everyday lives, contributing to making our communities a great place to live, work, and thrive. And...
Coquenino County Public Works exemplifies its years' themes of advancing the quality of life for all by providing exceptional service to our community in the daily maintenance and repair costs of our county road network to executing over twenty million dollars of road improvements, and by our commitment to inclusivity, innovation, collaboration, and our dedication to the public and workplace safety.
Whereas the Public Works team and activities reach all corners of Coquenino County, from Fredonia to Blue Ridge, from Williams to Mormon Lake, from Muntz Park to Carbito, and the northern lands of the Navajo Nation to maintain over a thousand miles of roadways and infractions across a vast and spectacular landscape. And...
The efficiency of highly skilled and dedicated team members with a broad range of professional experience and knowledge who staff Public Works divisions materially influenced by the public's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform.
Whereas the promises made in Proclamation four oh three empower Public Works to continue investments in efficient snow removal operations, road capital improvement plan projects, pavement preparation projects, and equipment purchasing programs that extend the service life and quality of our strategy assets and contribute to the health and safety and the comfort of our residents and visitors.
The National American Public Works Association, otherwise known as APWA, has declared the fourth full week of May as National Public Works Week. And this year will be recognizing during the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Whereas Coquenino County Public Works strives to create a culture of diversity, equality, and inclusion to reflect their values of our county and the communities we serve.
We are the Public Works team dedicated stewards of the Coquenino County infrastructure. Through our efforts and dedication of public service, we ensure sustainable, safe, and thriving community, epitizing this year's theme, advancing quality of life for all.
Therefore, be it resolved that we do hereby recognize May nineteenth through May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, a Public Works Week, and call upon all citizens and civil organizations to reflect upon and acknowledge the positive contributions that Public Works makes every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life in Coquenino County.
Thank you for that proclamation. Will we have any comments from board members at this time? Whichever one. Motion first.
At this point, I would go ahead and make a motion to approve a proclamation as read, designating May nineteenth through May twenty-fifth as Public Works Week.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Horstman. Do we have a second? Second by Supervisor Hess. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All right, thank you. Now, comments. Who would like to go first? We'll start with one.
Thank you. And thank you for the proclamation, and thank you for your service to Coquenino County. You know, you labeled yourself a stewards of Coquenino County infrastructure, but you were a lot more than that. And, you know, you're the unsung heroes that are out there in the middle of the night trying to keep our roads plowed in the wintertime so that people can get to work safely, get their kids to school safely in the morning. And you're out there, again, helping our rural parts of Coquenino County with their road maintenance and upkeep, and so many things that get done in Public Works. And so certainly you deserve a lot more than a week, I'm going to tell you that. But I want you to know, we appreciate all the work that you and your whole team does there in the department. You've got a good guy in Christopher Tressler. He's a good captain at the helm, and I'm really very, very sincerely grateful for all the work that you do and that you certainly deserve this week. So thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Supervisor Hess.
Thank you, Chair. Hey, great proclamation. I really appreciate it. That's not easy to do, and I have to do it here in a couple of seconds. So you led the way. You guys are doing great out there, and I'm glad I got to meet you. I think it was day two? Day two? That was cool. So I'm like, yeah, here we go. So and thank you, the unsung hero of Public Works. That's a big title. And you guys do amazing work. I've said it before to Christopher, you guys are like my home away from home because you guys arrived first in my internship and got to learn how the county works with probably the most complex program we've got. So continue to do everything you do and keep us safe. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Vice Chair Begay.
Thank you for bringing the proclamation before I said today and designating May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth as a Public Works Week. I, for one, am very thankful for all the roads that are being maintained for school bus routes, especially in the rural areas. And it means a lot, you know, for people to use that road for school, hospital visits, our work, you know, things like that, everything that they have to do, you know, going on those roads. And I just want to say thank you, Chris, your team, you guys, you have a good team, and I just want to say thank you so much. And certainly, you know, there's a lot of things that the program is doing, like proving projects, planning projects, and proving and carrying them through, and requesting for funds, and you name it, you know, that's all done within your department. So certainly, you know, again, I just want to say it's the repairs and everything, and then, of course, getting them dollars, like I said, and to making the road safe for everybody is very important, especially the snow days. You know, you're out there four, three, or four o'clock in the morning and, you know, working real late at night, you know. I want to thank you all for that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you. Yeah. We're talking about roads, but you also, you have our fleets. We have all, I mean, everything, you carry us. So it's really great. So thank you so much. And, you know, one of the things that have changed, I remember back when, snowed during the winter, we used to get complaints about the mailboxes being knocked off. So I don't really hear that anymore. Maybe that's Andy's work. No. But really appreciate your work. I know that the guys that are out there, that are doing their work, they're very popular in the community. Everybody appreciates them, everybody knows them. And just the work that is done through your department is just touches all of us. So I just really appreciate your work. Thank you so much. You are the heroes.
Yes, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate your work so much, keeping our roads safe. We have so many rural roads in Coquenino County that you're responsible for, and, you know, when there's snowfall and we need those plows, you guys are all out there. And so we really appreciate that, and it's fun to recognize you guys this week. So thank you. Before you go, can we get a picture? All right, thank you. All right, now we'll go back to number three. Recognition of Karen Avalera, the contestant winner for the County I Voted sticker, and Mary Corcoran, the contestant winner for the County Future Voter sticker, which will be used during the upcoming elections. And with that, I'll hand it over to Elections Director Esler Musta.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, county manager Peru. Thank you very much for inviting us to present and to talk a little bit about the Design Democracy sticker contest that the Elections Department held this last month, and to declare our sticker winners for the I Voted sticker that will be used for the twenty twenty-four election cycle, as well as the Future Voter sticker. And I'm very excited to be joined here today by Whitney Jusak, the Assistant Elections Director. I want to talk really, touch very briefly on the EAC Help America Vote College Program grant that the Elections Department received. It was a ten thousand dollar grant that we are working with in partnership with NAU and several other voter advocacy groups to get excitement about the upcoming elections and also recruit election board workers and use the opportunity and the funding to encourage and get some community participation in the upcoming elections. One of the, like, one of the activities under the grant that we undertook is the Help America, is the sticker design contest. We use this as a two-pronged approach. We first of all wanted to have a sticker to be used during the twenty twenty-four election cycle that had a local flair, the county colors that could be used at polling locations throughout the county. But we also wanted to kind of test our reach and our way of communicating with voters using social media and presence. So this competition gave us an opportunity to use and to test the reach of our platform, and the statistics are in here. The sticker design entries, the I Voted stickers, we had several entries. There were nine options that we released to the public to be voted. They all had, like I said, the county theme and the inclusion and incorporation of all the languages in our county, as well as the county colors. We also had five different options of Future Voter stickers, and I want to, like, stop and kind of highlight the option number five, even though it looks like a little design. But that was done in a very special place for our county, in the Supai Village down in the canyon by a, like, a five-year-old when Whitney joined the Secretary of State's office and traveled at the bottom of the canyon. So it's special, it's a drawing of, you can see, like, it's a future voter, but it's a drawing of a kid about how they imagine democracy and how they imagine voting in our county. Like I said, we opened the competition through our social media channels and had some help and promotion with our communications group, and I want to thank them for the work that they did. And then we came up with two winners. The I Voted sticker winner, it's on the top part, and it received fifty-three point five percent. I wouldn't be an Elections Director if I didn't do decimals and percentages. And then the Future Voter sticker received fifty-two point five percent of the votes. Today with us, I'm joined by the Mary Corcoran. Mary is a librarian here in Flagstaff, born and raised in Flagstaff, and she was the winner of the Future Voter sticker. And Mary described her sticker as the Future Voter sticker is cute with font that looks like marker and some cute decorations around the edges, and I feel like those are, they look very much like seeds of the future. So we're super excited to have that, and thank you, Mary, for sharing your design and creativity. I also wanted to introduce Karen Havelera. She's an NAU student, a first-generation NAU student that lives in our community and goes to school here at NAU. And I think she did an outstanding job at incorporating not only the ponderosa pine trees and the sacred mountains with the snow, but also incorporated all the languages. I voted shi hale, luna morata, and yavate as part of the sticker design. And I want to, like, turn it over to both of them for a couple of comments, and I'll come back to kind of the next steps that in this process do. Mary?
Hello. So, sorry. I just wanted to say, well, thank you to anybody who voted for my design, but I just really like encouraging people to be part of the democratic process, especially with the library. We've done two election programs with the Election Department to just try and get word out there. So I'm excited to be part of it.
And Karen Havelera is joining us online, and if you can promote her. Karen, can you?
Hello. I just wanted to say thank you for voting for my design. I'm a graphic designer here at NAU, and this means a lot to me, just getting my work out there, and it's nice to be part of the community, and voting this year is very important.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. One quick kind of wrap-up of the next steps. We've left on your desk, and there are some stickers. This is the first edition and the print edition, so it's very special. You might want to keep it for a future, like, it will probably appreciate significantly in value. But we are printing the stickers that will be distributed at voting locations for the primary and the general election this year. The winners are receiving a certificate of recognition signed by the Board of Supervisors that will hand up and mailed to Karen, as well as a hundred-dollar gift card from Bookman's because we figured that, again, democracy needs and elections need people that are well-read. The, so that wraps up my presentation, and just wanted to see if the board had any comments and have the opportunity to take a picture with the contest winners.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Congratulations, both winners. Really impressed with the designs. I really liked, on the Future Voter one, it reminded me of Oreo cookies. That's what I, I couldn't get that image out of my mind, but really cool for little ones. And then the other voted, I Voted sticker, I really liked the elements of the design and the fact that it had all the different languages in there. I thought that was a good touch. So congratulations, thank you. Are there any other supervisors that have comments this time? Vice Chair Begay.
I was just gonna... I just wanted to say thank you to both of the girls here, you know, coming forth and really making, taking to heart, you know, how they feel about being a voter and making sure that, you know, people go out and vote, and that it's important. And drafting this and designing this, I feel that, you know, it came from the heart. And so I just want to say thank you. And I do like the four says I voted, and then Navajo says shi e e ah. And then I'm not sure about the two other languages. So, but anyway, thank you so much for taking part in it, and Esler, thank you for heading this effort, and it means a lot, and, you know, it's going to go for some time. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other supervisors? Supervisor Horstman?
First of all, I think it was a really cool idea to do this. And you're right, I think, you know, it's an example of democracy, everybody's involved. And I... And I love the example, or I love the other designs. I'm sure this was a really hard decision, but the two winners are wonderful. I did not think of Oreo cookies, but now I will. But they're really wonderful. And what I love, I do love the different languages on the I Voted. But they're very, so indicative of our community. And I love that. I love that we're sharing our democracy in a way that's visible and something that we can share with all the people go to the polls here in Coquigno County to vote. So thank you, Mary. I see that you're on and, or Mary is here, I'm sorry. Karen, I see that you're on and thank you for your help. And I look forward to walking around town and seeing people wearing these stickers. I think it's going to be great. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hess.
Yes, thank you. This is very cool, I love it. I think as the Future Voter one, man, you're gonna feel proud when every one of these kids, as an educator in that world, it's gonna be very cool to see all the kids wearing these and have your influence. Very basic, very easy. I couldn't think of it, so I'm very impressed. And then, man, this other one is really cool. I love the mountains, I look at the mountains every day. As a graphic designer, it's gonna be so, be so proud. There's gonna be thousands of people these, wearing these. And take pride in that, because you both, you both earn it. So very proud of you and I think it's very cool. Thank you.
Supervisor Fowler?
Congratulations, what a great project. Thank you so much. And thank you for being involved, getting people involved and getting involved and getting these recognitions. It's really great, really like the stickers, thank you.
Thank you, all right. I do not believe there's any action, but just a request for a photo. So if we could come down to the front and take a photo with our contest winner. Thank you. All right, next up. Consideration and possible action to approve a proclamation designating May 2024 as Treatment Court Month. Recovery Court Coordinator Jesse Heath will read the proclamation. Good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you. Chair Vasquez, County Supervisors, County Manager Steve Peru. I'm just extremely grateful to be here today. Raised in Coquigno County, I work as the Court Coordinator for the Recovery Court Program at the Superior Court. And this proclamation also means a lot to me, because I'm a previous Recovery Court graduate. So I'm gonna read the proclamation. Whereas Treatment Court are the most successful interventions in our nation's history for leading people with substance use and mental health disorders out of the justice system and into the lives of recovery, sustainability, and health. And whereas there are now more than 4,000 Treatment Courts nationwide. And whereas Coquigno County Recovery Court has served thousands of individuals since 2001, resulting in countless successful outcomes and healthier communities, utilizing restorative justice, mitigating mass incarceration numbers, and improving overall health of community members. And whereas Coquigno County has created and supported the Coquigno County Veterans Court, Mental Health Court, and Family Treatment Court, continuing to provide innovative solutions to solve issues within diverse communities. And whereas Treatment Courts are the cornerstone of justice reform sweeping the nation. And whereas Treatment Courts have transformed the way the justice system responds to people with substance use and mental health disorders by combining accountability with evidence-based treatment. And whereas Treatment Courts annually refer more than 150,000 people to life-saving treatment and recovery support services. And whereas Treatment Courts save an average of $65,000 every year for every individual they serve and produce more effective solutions than incarceration. And whereas Treatment Courts significantly improve substance use disorder treatment outcomes, substantially reduce addiction and related crime, and do so at a less expense than any other justice strategy. And whereas Treatment Courts improve education, employment, housing, and financial stability, promote family reunification, reduce foster care placements. And whereas Treatment Courts facilitate community-wide partnerships, bridging together public safety and public health. And whereas Treatment Courts demonstrate that when one person rises, we all rise. Therefore, let it be resolved that May also be declared that Treatment Court Month be established during the month of May.
Thank you, appreciate that. I guess to follow order from earlier, can we get a motion? We have a motion by Vice Chair Brigade, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Now, comments by Board members. Supervisor Horstman?
Well, if I don't turn it off, she'll get mad.
I was having the same problem.
Thank you for reading that. And, you know, it's certainly, we, as you know, in Coquigno County and the Board of Supervisors have made a big commitment to our community and to all members of our community for increasing behavioral and mental health and providing behavioral and mental health programs. And certainly, the Treatment Courts are the crown jewel of that. And, you know, certainly, it's not only a cornerstone of justice reform, but it is really the cornerstone for a healthier community for all of us here in Coquigno County. So thank you, thank you for your commitment and thank you for reading.
Thank you, Supervisor Hess.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I've seen you a couple of times there. It's good to see you out of the court and doing great. And you're such, you don't realize it, but you are like the light in that courtroom when you talk to all the guys and girls out there. So you are a great leader when it comes to walk in the walk and talk in the talk. And very proud of you. I wish I could pull off that hat. But I'm super jealous. Continue to do it. I've been, I don't think I've missed one yet. We've been to two of them. Since I've been a supervisor, I've made it to every single one since I've been a supervisor, and I plan on going to all of them. So continue to rally the troops and, you know, the amount of people you're saving, it's domino effect on how many people they're saving. And it's just so important to watch that process. And it takes a strong guy like you to really take that on your shoulders and help all those people. So continue and we're here to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Supervisor, Supervisor Fowler?
Well, congratulations on your, on your journey. I know that it's very rough sometimes for people, a lot of times for people that are going through that process. And you graduated and now you're turning around and helping others. And that's just absolutely amazing. So thank you for reading the proclamation. And Treatment Court is so important. That is our conversation here almost every board meeting. And as we're out in the community, you know, there's great challenges and a lot of it just has to do with mental health, behavioral health, and trying to figure out how to, where is, how do we provide treatment? And what is the right kind of treatment? And that, and being able to help people along the way to be able to change their, their, something click in their head to finally say, oh, okay, this is not a right path. So just like Adam says, you know, you're very strong to be able to help others. It takes a lot. And so thank you for dedicating yourself. And thank you to your, your family for supporting, because you gotta have that foundation to be able to do what you're doing. So just want to thank you. And treatment programs are so important right now. And that's our conversation right here during budget season. That's what we're having a conversation about. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Brigade?
Thank you for reading the proclamation this evening. It means a lot, you know, to have someone come before you and have gone through the process. And we don't know what, why, and how they got themselves in there. But, you know, nonetheless, you know, we think, you know, people that are in the justice system and go through that justice system, you know, they're asking for help and they get help. And it's good that you're back, you know, standing here before us as an example and willing to help others, you know, to go through this process and also to ensure that, you know, it's leading to, um, that recovery and then also stability and all the good health that may be coming with it, you know, as you go along. So I just want to say thank you very much, you know, for being, you know, that person and being a role model and being out there. And we do support the Division VII, you know, that's part of the budgets that we're talking about. You know, mental health is something that's real. And, you know, we just want to make sure that, you know, we do have earmarked some plans, you know, to address those needs. So I just want to thank you again.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this proclamation to us. Really appreciate it. It's time that we recognize the great work that Recovery Court's doing. It's such a, such an important demonstration of how therapy can be, or treatment, better said, can be more effective than incarceration. Sometimes folks that are caught up in these situations, they want to get out but don't know how. And this program gives them hope. I've watched people through the various graduations that have gone to that I know in the court or in the, watching the ceremony, but not still in the program. And I know that listening to those testimonials give them strength. I can see it, you know, and I really appreciate that. And it's just a testimony to the power of testimonials and the power of being part of a positive group and having access to some of those wraparound services and supports that otherwise they don't have, you know. And so it's really important work that's being done. And it's really amazing to see the changes in the folks as you go through multiple graduations and see people still there, but not there yet. But, you know, you can tell that they're getting closer and closer and are excited. And it's such important work. As has been mentioned before, we're looking at our budget. We're looking at things that we want to support. And supporting Recovery Court, supporting our various mental health courts and other courts that are diversionary programs instead of incarceration programs are so important to our county. And so thank you for bringing this to us and give us this opportunity to highlight this. Can we get a picture? All right. Next up, we have item number five. Consideration and possible action to approve a proclamation designating May as Military Appreciation Month in Coquigno County and acknowledge the 12th Annual Lance Davidson Memorial High Country Stand Down observed on Wednesday, May 15th, 2024. With that, I'll hand it over to my colleague Supervisor Hess to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Chair. It's my honor to read this proclamation. So I'll try to do as well as everyone else that went before me. Proclamation designated May 24th as Military Appreciation Month in Coquigno County and acknowledge the 12th Annual Lance Davidson Memorial High Country Stand Down observed on Wednesday, May 15th, 2024. Whereas, May is National Military Appreciation Month. And whereas, 365 days a year, seven days a week, and 24 hours a day, members of the US military are on call around the world, defending the interests and security of the nation. And whereas, we honor and pay tribute to current and former members of the United States Armed Forces and to those who have sacrificed so much for our freedom, including those who have died in the pursuit of freedom. And whereas, we want to express our gratitude to members of the United States Military and their families for all they do every day and observe the month in a symbol of unity. And whereas, the 12th Annual Lance Davidson Memorial High Country Stand Down will be observed on Wednesday, May 15th, 2024, at the Flagstaff Armory in Flagstaff, Arizona. And whereas, Coquigno County has supported this endeavor and community project since its founding in 2012. It is sincerely concerned for the general welfare and overall well-being of all veterans and their families. And whereas, the Veteran Stand Down provides information, assistance, and outreach regarding essential community services, which are available for all veterans throughout Northern Arizona. And whereas, Coquigno County also provides Veterans Court to help veterans resolve their legal obligations and be in good standing with the community. Now, therefore, we do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Military Appreciation Month in Coquigno County and acknowledge the efforts of the High Country Stand Down and call upon citizens to respect, honor the who, those who have served their country. Signed and sealed on this 14th day of May, 2024, Coquigno County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the proclamation designating May as Military Appreciation Month in Coquigno County and acknowledge the 12th Annual Lance Davidson Memorial High Country Stand Down? We have a motion by Supervisor Fowler?
It's certainly my great honor to second that.
We have a second by Supervisor Horstman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. Now, comments from Board members. Supervisor Hess?
We're not gonna do photo here, what the plan is, we're gonna try to do a photo at the stand down tomorrow.
Good.
Good.
So um, all of us, if we can go, I think we're gonna try to find a break.
During lunch, can't we?
Yeah, yeah, I think at lunch. So we wanna go there and uh, and then Brian's gonna take care of us and then let everybody there know. So um, as a veteran, as a retired army officer, this, this means a lot and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, other comments by supervisors. Vice Chair Brigade.
Yes, um, thank you, thank you. Supervisor Hess, um, this means a lot. I think um, this issue here has affected a lot of our people out there. Every, every single one of us, whether it be, you know, a relative of some type or friends, you know. And some of them left and never came back and it's affected us and kinda shattered some, you know, livelihoods of families. And I know um, I had brother in um, overseas and um, when he, when he got back, he got, I don't know. He just kinda, it affected him, you know, because mentally, um, and then at the end, you know, we lost him. So it means a lot to me, you know, to remember and just with this proclamation being read, you know, that reminds me of my brother. And I think each and every one of us have that same um, um, notion as far as, you know, um. And um, and, and, and we miss, and you miss them. Sometimes you lose oversleep over it, you know, and you sit up at night. And you know, there's so much um, thing, things that happen, you know, uh, when they're, when, when a person is away, your kids are away forever. You know, and they're in the armed forces and some, again, you know, not coming back. I think that's the worst part. I just wanna say thank you for this proclamation. It means a lot to me.
Thank you. Any other supervisors? Supervisor Horseman.
Yes, and uh, you did a great job of reading that. Thank you very much. We appreciate you reading that proclamation. And uh, also just, I think it's so important, we are talking about the "I have voted" stickers. And this is part of that continuing um, uh, level of democracy here in our country. Uh, from uh, voting, maintaining we have um, uh, secured the right to vote in the voting process. We do that and we have done that repeatedly, um, uh, because of people who've put their life on the line in the military. Um, uh, and many of us, of course, I don't think there's anybody that's family members have not, or have a family member that has not served in the military. Uh, it is an important part of who we are as a country and as our service to our country and our commitment to our democracy. So uh, and boy, with that, we're gonna take down the lights. So uh, so for those that have served, a huge thank you. For those that are serving, we continue to honor uh, your service. Uh, and uh, we as a country and certainly as Coconino County, need to do what we can to take care of our veterans when they return home. So thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you. Um, if you're a veteran or if you have a family member that is a veteran, that is, that you're trying to help come to the stand down. Coconino County helped start this. The Board of, Board of Supervisors. Lot of times when our young veterans come home, even our older veterans, they don't ask for help. And even when help's there, they don't ask for it. And um, I think it's really important for, for all veterans to um, to really um, ask and be a part of. Um, and that's what the uh, even the veterans organizations that are out there, they're not, they don't have all the veterans that are, that are accounted for. They, they don't attend these um, veterans events. Um, and they have a hard time adjusting into the civilian life. And for that reason, um, this stand down uh, was started. So, you know, we can't just say that we support veterans. We can't just say that we um, give thanks. There's much more than that. We have to try to understand. And that's what I think our county's been doing. That's why we have the Veterans Courts. That's why we have the Stand Down. That's why we have um, you know, all these different services that are coming through and trying to help veterans. But at, in the end though, the veterans has, has to reach out and say, yes, I'm, I'm ready to um, to be helped. So I just really um, thank, I think Adam um, for, for his service and for reading a proclamation. And just being, um, I wish we didn't have veterans. I wish we didn't have to have veterans. Unfortunately, that, that's where we are. And, but we're always here to, to be, be here for them. Be here and try to, try to support. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Adam, for your service and for reading the proclamation. Good job for your first time. You know what this means, right? Many more. No, but uh, just wanna recognize the importance of this proclamation and the importance of the stand down. Uh, and providing services for those veterans who come back because they went and did a job to stand on the front lines for us. And so, once they come back, this society has an obligation to make sure that they're uh, taken care of. And too many times in our society, veterans fall through the cracks. And so that's why these stand down programs are so important, to connect veterans to services, to services and wraparound services that are so, so needed. And uh, again, there was mentioned Veterans Court, that's really important as well. That's again, one of those diversionary programs that, that we as a board uh, continue to support. And uh, look for every opportunity to highlight those programs and be grateful for those programs and recognize all those folks that are part of those different programs. For their uh, for their service to, to our community. And then last and, and not least, to all our veterans, thank you for your service. Thank you. Are there uh, no, no pictures? So I guess we're ready to, tomorrow. So tomorrow at the Armory, uh, what time is the event tomorrow, the stand down? Nine to two tomorrow at the Flagstaff Armory by Thorpe Park. Uh, we will be there around lunchtime. Thank you. All right, next up, we are to our consent agenda. Right? We have like 50 items tonight. Uh, hopefully not, uh, we won't have too many pulled. All matters under consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. Are there any items that board members want to consider separately?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, Supervisor.
Uh, could I do eight, nine, ten? Just kidding. I got you, didn't I? Uh, but I really do need to separate item number 12.
Okay, are there any other items on our long extensive uh, consent agenda? Yes, Vice Chair Brigade.
Thirty-three, thirty-four.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other items to pull?
I, at this time, I would move that we accept the consent agenda minus item number 12 and 33 and 34.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Horseman. Do we have a second? A second by Vice Chair Brigade. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move on to item number 12. Consideration and possible action to approve the direction given to attorneys in executive session regarding retaining an expert witness in Flagstaff Properties I LLC versus Coconino County PX 2023 dash zero zero, zero two one eight. An active tax valuation appeal. With that, I'll hand it over to staff.
I think I can make a motion, but I think it needed to be, did you want some information on it?
I thought that they will, you just want a motion on it?
This is the item we discussed, um, yeah, in executive session. Uh, if, if there are questions, obviously I don't wanna get in the way of questions, but I could make a motion on this.
No, you can make the motion.
Okay, not a problem. I just thought since it was pulled, we wanted to discuss it, but if everyone's good, deputy manager.
Chair Vasquez, members of the board, we defer to Supervisor Horseman for the motion. So thank you very much.
Uh, at this point, I would um, entertain, or I would make a motion to approve uh, the direction given to attorneys in executive session regarding retaining an expert witness in Flagstaff Properties One LLC v. Coconino County. Uh, an active tax valuation appeal, number as set forth uh, in our agenda. And I would also add to that, that we authorize the county manager to sign the appropriate, appropriate contracts. I, I'm gonna need a new mic. Uh, uh, and um, and, and secondly, that if there is a need uh, to utilize an expert witness for any kind of uh, rebuttal, uh, appraisal work, et cetera, that that also be authorized as part of this um, motion.
Thank you. Do we have, we have a motion by Supervisor Horseman. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second by uh, Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Motion passes. Next item is item 33. Consideration and possible action to increase the fuel expenditure account in a budget adjustment from Mechanical Services Fund in the amount of $450,000 in the expense account and a budget adjustment in the amount of $522,000 to the revenue account. And with that, I'll hand it over to Public Works staff.
Thank you, Chair Vasquez. Board of Supervisors, I'm Christopher Tressler. I serve as the Public Works Director. And to explain these two items, we've experienced an increase in uh, the purchasing of fuel for not just Public Works but across the county. So item number 33 is related, related to the Mechanical Services Fund. And item number 34 is related to the Transportation Fund. Item 33 is uh, connected to the General Fund. And item 34 is uh, the Transportation Fund, which is not part of the General Fund. Departments uh, including Public Works are traveling throughout the county and we're burning a lot of fuel. We also sell fuel. The Department of Public Safety and the City of Flagstaff can purchase fuel from Coconino County. And so we're, we're seeing this uh, budget adjustment necessary for that. I think uh, Vice Chair Brigade may have, they want some information about this, that we're, we're buying a lot of fuel. And there's concern about the carbon footprint of our county and uh, the burning of fossil fuels. And I can report that we're, we're investigating the, the purchasing of hybrid vehicles. That uh, we see that as potentially a transition towards uh, electric vehicles and decreasing our carbon footprint. We're, if we could present more information tomorrow, uh, or we can come back. Mechanical services and we can do a specific action item or a, or a presentation to the board, excuse me. And we talk about what we're seeing as far as trends of the cost of hybrid electric vehicles as they relate to gas powered vehicles. But we're definitely in the process of evaluating uh, the efficiency of those vehicles and their capacity. Some of the things that we take into account are pursuit capabilities for officers and the range. For Public Works, it, it relates to a capacity issue, uh, about the, the volume and the weight uh, that we need to tow and, and work through vehicles. But uh, we're looking at opportunities where we can to uh, to adopt hybrid electric vehicles initially. And uh, and long-term, potentially electric.
Thank you. Are there any questions from board members at this time? Supervisor Fowler.
Uh, thank you, Chris. Uh, let's be realistic when we're talking about electric, electric vehicles. We all want it. But, you know, we, if, maybe in the Flagstaff area, you can consider. Um, I just, one that I sent you all pictures last week, last month. Right out of, I, outside of Page, um, there was a, there was a young man. His um, battery ran out. I had to go by there and, and help him. And I had him, um, I called AAA on my phone and they couldn't help him. They, no one was gonna come out, had a little generator station, generator right there and gave him water and food. But you know, when we are, we, we are wanting to, I don't, we cannot move too fast. We have to really be realistic and find out where all the stations are. And the capability of those um, charging stations, you know, takes, it doesn't, it's not like you can plug in and then you're gone. And, and within five minutes, you know, probably plan on getting lodging right there. So I think we need to just be real careful when we're, we're really looking at this. Uh, and um, so that's what, that's what I would say. And I think yeah, um, we're gonna be with, um, I think we're gonna be buying fuel for a while. We gotta really look at the infrastructure. That's where it's at.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from board members? My only question is, can we vote on both items together or do we need to vote each one separate? Vote, vote them together? Okay, in that case, can I get a motion to approve items number 33 and 34? Vice Chair Brigade?
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Brigade and a second by Supervisor Hess. All those in favor, please indicate and say aye.
Aye.
All right, both mo, motion is approved, items 33 and 34. Thank you. All right, now may I have a motion to resolve as the Health Services District Board of Directors?
So moved.
We have a motion by Supervisor Horseman. Do I have a second? We have a second by Supervisor Hess. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Uh, may, may have a, unless somebody would like to pull one of the items from 47 or 48. May I have a motion to approve the Health District Consent Agenda items 47 and 48?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Horseman. We have a second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. We uh, consent agenda for Public Health District. Uh, now may I have a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors?
So moved.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Brigade. Do I have a second? Second by Supervisor Hess. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now the Board of Supervisors and now we must uh, resolve into the Jail District Board of Directors. May I have a motion to resolve as the Jail District Board of Directors? We have a, a motion by Supervisor Hess. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Vice Chair Brigade. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, now we are on the Jail District Consent Agenda, item 49. Uh, unless there's any questions or comments, may I have a motion to approve Jail District Consent Agenda 49?
So moved.
We have a motion by Supervisor Horseman. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Supervisor Hess. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Now may I have a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors? We have, I have a motion by Vice Chair Brigade. Do we have a second? We have a second by Supervisor Hess. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, um, it looks like we're a little ahead of schedule on item number 50. Should, do we need to take a break? No? Good, okay.
Chair Vasquez, supervisors, thank you. Um, I am before you tonight regarding item number 50, action item. And actually, do you have a representative for the application here, Bill Von Egger, who's on virtually, in case there's any questions? The Arizona Room Steakhouse is located in the Bright Angel Lodge at 9 North Village Loop in the Grand Canyon Village. And this is within District One. Um, the agent Rulon Gordon Taylor is seeking a permanent extension of the permanent premises for an existing liquor license. So the permanent extension requires um, to go through the um, process again in a recommendation from the board to the State Department of Liquor. The State Department of Liquor is the agency that actually issues the extension. And an extension can be adding a patio, a dance floor. So basically, they're changing the footprint of their liquor license. And so that's what they're seeking today, is to do an extension of an existing permanent liquor license. And it would be a permanent extension, not temporary. We did send the application out to our various departments, risk, community development, health, and sheriff's office. They do not have any concerns regarding the application. And so again, that Bill Von Egger is here in case there's any questions regarding the application. We haven't had any concerns or comments from the public either. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the applicant, the representative for the application want to present virtually?
Bill, if you can go ahead and unmute and share your screen or your camera, turn your camera on if you're able to.
Bill, it'd be great if you could just kind of give an overview of what you're looking to do there at the Arizona Room Steakhouse at Bright Angel Lodge.
Yeah, but my name's Brian, but that's, that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries. So the Bright Angel, the Arizona Room, there's a patio that's been existence for there for a lot of years. And I think maybe it was just assumed that the customers could carry drinks out there and as they're maybe waiting for a table when the weather's nice. So we're just, when then we checked on it and lo and behold, it's not under our liquor license. So we're just trying to rectify that. It's been built and kind of used in that fashion, especially years ago. So we're just trying to make sure everything's in accordance with our liquor license.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from board members at this time? Supervisor Horseman?
Just a comment, and then I'd be happy to make a motion. But thank you, Brian, for being with us. And we look forward to making a motion. I look forward to making a motion on this and certainly appreciate everything you do up there at the Bright Angel Lodge. And I've spent a little bit of time up there at the Arizona Room Steakhouse and probably accidentally may have carried a beer out of this steakhouse as well. So I'm really glad accidentally. And so I'm very glad it's, you're making it legal. And I certainly am a big supporter of their recommendation for approval of the Arizona Department of Liquor License. And unless somebody else would like to make a comment, at this time, I would make a motion that we, the board, make a recommendation of approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and control regarding the Arizona Room Steakhouse's request for a permanent extension of premises for an existing liquor license that they currently have for their restaurant located there at the Bright Angel Lodge in Village Loop Drive at Grand Canyon, Arizona.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Horseman. Do we have a second? We have a second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Yes, thank you. All right, next up, item fifty-one. Discussion and possible action regarding approval of the amendment to County Manager Steve Peru's employment agreement and authorize Chairman Heronimo Vasquez to sign the amendment to the employment agreement on behalf of the Board of Supervisors to effectuate the board's actions. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a second. Okay, before we make the vote, do we have any comments or discussion from board members? Supervisor Horseman?
Yes, and this is a difficult, but also a good evening for all of us here. Three years ago, the Board of Supervisors were very fortunate that we could coax Steve Peru back to take over the helm of Coquenino County to be our manager. Steve's unique skills, his depth of knowledge was particularly needed during those years. And those of us that were on the board during that time certainly understand why. Here was an individual whose past county service had included just about everything, starting as a county intern and gradually working his way to county manager. And in between, holding, I think, every position there was here in Coquenino County. And who knew it was going to take every ounce of that experience to lead the country through some of our most challenging times? Starting in a worldwide pandemic and overseeing our response, including delivering testing and vaccines throughout the county, partnering with our nonprofits to deliver services, to redistricting, remember that? To dealing with two catastrophic forest fires, to post wildfire flooding, to advocating and obtaining over a hundred million in federal and state flood mitigation monies, to overseeing massive flood mitigation projects in the greater Flagstaff area, and delivering on these projects in record time, to overseeing elections, developing a new election department, building a election warehouse. Well, and I could just keep going on and on, but I know we don't have all night. So let's just say that there's been so many things that it's been really hard to catch our breath. Steve is indeed Mr. Coquenino County. His love for the county and our communities has been on display and continues to be on display every single day. However, he let the board know when we hired him back that to ensure continuity and stability for the county, the board and management needed to embark on succession planning. To that end, Steve has been instrumental in developing and mentoring county management. Steve brought back another longtime county employee, Andy Bertelson, a person that also held almost every position here in Coquenino County through his years here with Coquenino County. So today is bittersweet, but we know Steve's guidance will continue through this transition. And his passion and his love for Coquenino County is always gonna be there. So thank you, Steve. Words do not adequately convey the gratitude we owe you, nor adequately convey the service that you have provided to our communities. And the legacy that you've created speaks volumes. On a personal note, you helped us all. You helped me be the best I can be as a county supervisor. And your guidance and your friendship continues to inspire us all. So thank you so much, Steve. And, you know, I look, look forward to continuing to work with you and work through the various challenges that I know we're gonna have as we move forward, especially with that expenditure limit, but we have other challenges too. So thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Fowler?
Thank you. Steve, thank you for your agreeing to come back. And I think when we asked you, you were a little surprised, but maybe, but you were up for it. So thank you so much. You know, Steve didn't just start a few years ago. When I came, when I was elected, Steve was here. And, and really groomed us into the groom the board to work together. And two thousand and ten Schultz fire, Steve was here through the floods that we re- learned so much through that. And it's really stressful times. And then the recession hit. And just the challenge that brought on. And just coming through and having, making sure the county was, was in a really good situation to be able to take care of ours, continue to provide the services throughout the county. Steve really, working with Steve, he really did bring, take the county services countywide. That has, I've seen that happen. So I'm just really happy that you have come, you know, you left and worked with, in the private sector, worked with CCC, and then you're back here. And just that knowledge that you came, you brought back here and implemented and, and seeing how you could do things differently here in the county really has helped us. And now where you're going, you're continuing to, you're gonna continue to be with us and work with us and really happy about that. And your institution, talk about institutional knowledge. That is the strength, a lot of times with an organization, is that institutional knowledge. And you have that. So I just wanna thank you for it and just really enjoy working with you and continue to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Hess?
Well, this is exciting. We talked about this at length and I'm glad that it came to fruition. And thank you for your service. I, I, I catch myself reiterating things you've said to me in the short amount of time. Just number one thing is it's county first. And your guidance has been great and, and so helpful and, and your support. Just to be around someone that started as an intern, both you and Andy, that's just amazing. And, and looking forward to, man, you're not done working. So you got, you got some work out for you for next year or so. So I really appreciate that. This isn't goodbye. This is, hey, we got more work for you and go over there and do great things. So it's, it's been a great, it's been amazing. And then, you know, as we step in with Andy going, jumping in with both feet and, and you're gonna do great, both of you. And I, I really appreciate both of you helping me out to get to where I am now and, and where, where you guys are gonna help me get and where we're gonna take the county and, and continue to spread this great love for this county. So appreciate it.
Thank you. Vice Chair Brigade?
Thank you, Chair. Well, Steve, done it all. And, and it's good to see, you know, a lot of programs and a lot of things that were brought to the board, you know, as some suggestions and follow-throughs and to implement and, you know, to move forward with the county in certain ways. And always listening. You listen to all of us and whatever we brought to your attention, you always have some answers. And/or you directed us to certain individuals or you'll get a team together, you know, to talk to us. And I really appreciate that. And, and being a public servant for fifty years, I, I, I know how you, where you're at and how you feel and how you work with people already, even after three years. So I just wanna say thank you so much, you know, for being there, you know, for the county. And you are Mr. County, Coquenino County, you know, and that's how I see you and that's how I view you. And you work with your staff, you know, in certain ways that, you know, that really shows that there's team efforts and, you know, making sure that the staff are comfortable and really, really advocating for your staff, you know, and to the board and talking about various programs that would really fit in or changes or whatever it may be. So I just wanna say thank you for that. And you're still gonna be here, working with us, and I appreciate that. And, you know, your willingness to come back and work for the county again, you know, I, I felt very confident, you know, at the time that we had you come back on. And for Andy, thank you so much for taking, wanting to take the helm of the, of the county. And certainly you have a lot of great experience. And also, you know, you have, you've been at various capacities, the city and county. And, you know, that really molds you when you go from one to the other and, you know, trying to implement things that work best, you know, in, in other organizations. And you can see, you know, what, what needs to get done and how to go about things and getting things done. So I just wanna say thank you too for, you know, really coming forth and helping the board and always being there for the board. And, and when we tell you something, you know, you get right on it too. So, you know, that's, that's, that's good. And I appreciate your staff. And the staff that you're gonna be working with, you know, they've already been molded and you've always been part of that. So it's just a smooth transition, the way I see it. So thank you for so much for, you know, both of you, to both of you for all the hard work that you're doing with your, with your staff, Sue and others that are within the departments, Lysinda. And I really appreciate all you guys. So.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd just like to first off say thank you, Steve, for your leadership over these last three years. You brought stability to the county when we were under a lot of duress, a lot of different emergencies happening. And you brought calm through your relationship building, through your social work background of working with us and kind of settling, settling us through the storm. And so I really appreciate your leadership through that. And we're here today because you brought succession planning to us. You, you made it a point to tell us at the beginning of the year, this is something we need to think about. And so thank you for helping guide that process. And we really appreciate that we're here now and that we have all your institutional knowledge to tap into as we're moving through this transition period. And one thing that I've always really appreciated that you brought to the table, which was mentioned before, was the countywide approach. And for me, where that stuck out most was during the ARPA process. Because during that time, other counties were doing different things. Some counties, districts just divided up their ARPA money and spent it in their district how they chose. And you brought to us a different approach. You brought to us, you know what, let's look how we can spread this through the whole county. And so I really appreciate that. And to me, that's part, part of your, your, your legacy that I look for us to continue moving forward with that countywide approach as we're making decisions. And again, just thank you for all your public service. Thank you. All right, with that said, we have, would you like to say some comments before we move on?
I'll, I'll, I'll keep it short because, well, I'll be here for three days. No, appreciate it very much. I wanna, in addition to thanking the board, I also wanna thank former board members, Archilett and Ryan. They, they approached me initially. And, you know, at that time, you know, they, they said it's gonna be a tough job. And it has been like a three-year sprint. And you know me, I'm, I don't have a runner's body, so I'll just leave it at that. But at the end, it's, it's, it was, it was truly a dream come true to be able to come back to the county and to reunite and to, you know, to, to do some great things. I think that, as I said, I've said several times this week, I don't know if there's ever a good time for change, but there's always a best time for change. And so I think that's important to look at, you know, all the things that, you know, is there a good time to do many things? Probably not, because there are a lot of things that are competing. Changes in leadership are somewhat disruptive. Our conversation this afternoon with appointed and elected leadership was special to have the discussion we had. And, you know, I, I'm so confident and I feel so good in, in the next leader here, Andy Bertelson. He brings a wealth of talent, skills, compassion. He leads from the heart. You know, he's good. He's gonna be great. And, you know, it's, it's an honor to, to be able to say, you know, it's all yours. No, I will, I will miss this. You know, I'm not leaving. I'm gonna be doing all the things that, you know, we all go through time in our careers where we have a long list of projects. So we always say, if we only had time to do that, well, you know, you provided me the opportunity to do some important project work. One is the expenditure limit, looking at strategic planning. We have a lot of things that we need to be doing at the county. They'll position the county for the future. And that's what we wanna do here. So I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And I just wanna make sure that we know, you, I believe in the history of Coquenino County, you have taken the title of county manager the most.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Four times.
Yeah, and several mini, mini stints as the acting manager. But I've always been, you know, I've always been working with some really great managers. And if we look at our history of managers here, a lot of folks that have come from other parts of the country to Coquenino County have become really excellent managers here. And so we always learn from our predecessors and, and that creates our own skill set. So thank you.
Thank you. And with that said, we have a motion and we have a second. So all those in favor of approving this amendment, this action, indicate by saying aye.
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 All right, thank you. Motion passes. Next item is discussion and possible action to approve unemployment agreement and confirm the appointment of Andy Bertelson effective July one, two thousand and twenty-four, and authorize Chairman Heronimo Vasquez to sign the employment agreement on behalf of the Board of Supervisors to effectuate the board's actions.
So moved.
We have a motion by Supervisor Horseman. Do I have a second? We have a second by Vice Chair Brigade. All those in, oh wait, we're gonna do discussion first, sorry. Do we have comments from board members at this time?
Sure, I'll do it. You know, obviously Andy, you know, it's wonderful. Have you taken on this new leadership? Your strong background in financial planning and department management, I think is going to bode well for the business here in Coconino County. And I think you're yours as deputy county manager and working a close relationship with county manager, working with all the department. Your close working relationship with the board makes you exceptionally well situated and to provide the employees, the board, our community with that stability and continuity as we move forward. And we're just really fortunate to have someone with your background and skills. The county manager indicated, and I agree, you do lead with your heart. Your compassionate leadership with your skills and your experience is really going to serve Coconino County and this board well. And so I look forward to a close collaboration with you as we tackle the challenges. We jump on opportunities. We look to set the direction of our county. We look to get that countywide expenditure limit discussion going. And we really move Coconino County in a positive direction to serve all of our residents here. So I really appreciate you being willing to take on the reins and take on the commitment because it certainly is going to be a commitment. And thank you so much. I really am excited about the future of Coconino County. And I know you've got a, a good background here with, with Steve in your corner and you've got the board in your corner as well. So thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you. Andy, wow, congratulations. Thank you to you and thank you to Steve for really looking forward. Have that vision forward and allow, and working with the staff, working with our board to say we need to do, do this and do a succession planning. Because there's so much, there's so many moving parts going on. Do we have elections coming up? We have, everyone's running for reelection or there's going to be change in leadership in, in the county. We have expenditure limits that we are dealing with. We still have the state to deal with. So and within all of that, you were able to say, okay, that we need to do this. So thank you. And Andy, I've worked with you since I was elected. It was because of your, your stance and your strong, taking the strong position that we have opposition for three on Navajo Nation. It was challenging meetings that we went through and you went through the Schultz fire, the flooding. You're very, very knowledgeable about, about that. You were a public works director. And, and then working with all the various departments. And I think that you just going over to the city and then coming back and really having the county at heart. And you, Andy, know, you know how to work with a board. And that's what we need. And employees and your vision and your, your, the way you approach everything is diversity. In every sense of that word. And that's what I think makes you really strong. And that's what I've seen through your work. And just that as a foundation makes you a great leader. So I really appreciate you. I know you're going to take this county to the next step. And to the employees, we have a great leader that's coming and that is so knowledgeable in all facets of county. I've seen you work with various people, with the communities, with the tribes. The tribes just really know you well. You know, the community when you're out there, everyone knows you by your name as, as Steve as well. But you're, with that knowledge in your, and having that, you're, you're going to take this county to another level. So I really appreciate you stepping up and giving yourself to the county as you've always done. But taking the leadership role. Thank you. And Sue, got to thank Sue, always have been a team. So thank you. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you. Other supervisors, Supervisor Hess.
Yeah, I kind of jumped the gun and combined the last two together. I was too excited. This is a huge thing and but I do want to say, hey, I think we've made a great selection and by, by your guidance, Steve, and prove us right. That's all I can ask is do the job we know you can do and, and do it well and just prove us right.
Thank you Vice Chair Bagay.
I saw, I also jumped the gun. But, but, you know, again, just thank you and congratulations. You mean a lot to the board and the staff that, you know, they, you have like an open door policy. People can just come up to you and you'll talk and you won't just walk away. You'll stand there and listen and things like that. So I just want to say thank you again, you know, I, I did my, I think, you know, that, you know, you're, you're, you really think about the overall county. And, you know, you always talk about the road maintenance stuff, you know, on the, on, in the rural communities and that means a lot to the people out there. And other, other, other functions that do happen, you know, stand downs, whatever it may be, you know, you're, 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 so with a leader like that, you know, that is interested and always being available and always being there to guide and to help, you know, people and, you know, that's what people look for. So you're that person. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. Now I'd like to take the opportunity to congratulate you. It's been an interesting process to get here. Change is always difficult for all of us and I feel like through our team, through your leadership, through Steve's leadership, we were to make this transition as smooth as possible. We still have a lot of work to do. We're not done, but we look forward to your leadership moving forward. And as was mentioned before, you know, you've shown us to date that you have the ability to be a manager for our county. And so now as my colleague mentioned, prove us right, you know, you're, you're in good hands and you have our support and we want to, we want to see this county move forward and we do believe that, that you're our next leader. So thank you. Before, should we make the vote? We have a motion and then we'll give Andy a chance. Right? We have the motion. We have a second, correct? In that case, all those in favor of the appointment of Andy Bertelson as our future manager, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
I was going to make a substitute motion, but I figured. It's getting late.
All right. With that said, Andy, I'd like to give you the floor.
So Chair Vasquez, members of the board, I'm sure I'm glad you took the vote before I spoke. I'm honored and humbled that you all have the faith in me in this position. And grateful for the opportunity and knowing that Coconino County is just different. There, there's a sacred thing about it that just is. And when you think about what is that thing that Coconino County is, a big part of it is sitting right here. Steve Peru and really the inspiration for Steve having essentially every title in, in the county over a period of time. And it really, as I look at it, essentially took on the jobs that nobody else really wanted to do. And he did it with pride and he did it well. And he showed the county proud. And I've sort of modeled that in some way as well. To your point Supervisor Hess, prove us right, you know. When Paul Babbitt, Matt Ryan, Liz Archileta, Tom Chabon and Louise Yellman hired me as an intern in the late 90s, that was my goal to prove that they had made a good choice and in doing so, found a home. And so as a one-time intern, one-time legislative assistant. And that was during the growing smarter days and just a lot of exciting things happened at the legislature. One-time budget manager. And one-time public works director. And a little bit of story about the public works director. It was the middle of a snowstorm in January and Steve took me out to public works and essentially dropped me off and said, you're the public works director. And frankly, I was pretty scared. And, and then, and it wasn't until about six or eight o'clock at night, I realized I didn't have a car out there. And, and so I think Byron or somebody gave me a ride back. But in the meantime, we had a major accident. Someone had rolled a snowball on Lake Mary Road that first day. And really set the tone for what it takes to be a public works director and what it takes to lead through some really difficult times. And the operator, I remember sitting in the truck with him and he was very shaken. And he's now a very successful public servant as well in this community. And I'm just very proud of him and just really learning from those mistakes that we make along the way. And Steve given me the opportunity to make those mistakes and, and being able to learn from those. And then an assist, an interim assistant county manager in 2011, and that was during a time of transition as well. And it involves Steve Peru as well during that time. And, and you know, so many moments in our county that are so significant and those significant moments are really what makes us. And then sort of my research sabbatical with the city of Flagstaff and really getting to see Coconino County from who we are here on the inside. And then viewing the county from a different organization and from a different lens and from a different viewpoint, a different ship, if you will. And I remember the, and I mentioned this during the leadership meeting today during the museum fire and subsequent flooding from my colleagues at the city that would listen. I said, pay attention to Coconino County and how they do this because they know how and we need to learn how and we need to be able to do this someday. And you know, today, the city of Flagstaff responds, well, I'm not saying they didn't before, but we hadn't faced something of that magnitude before. And that's the special thing that is Coconino County. And I'm not saying they're great situations, but when it comes time to be who we are, we are the best at what we do. In terms of working with the board and all the success that we have, the local level, the state level, the federal level, that takes hard work. And so the commitment to the board and working with you and Vice Chair Bagay, thanks for not telling the story when I tripped and fell on the escalator when we were traveling together. But we made a good trip of it nonetheless, and we came back with success because that's what we do. So wherever I've been and the places that we may go, Coconino County has always been with me. It's always been my, I, I would say home away from home, but it's become my home. And Supervisor Fowler, I remember being on KTNN radio with you in 2014 and just thinking, what a special moment. How lucky am I to get to be a part of this? It's pretty spectacular. In my opinion, Coconino County and any, you know, getting to work with the city of Sedona and then the city of Flagstaff. In my opinion, that experience in taking Coconino County where we go benefits everyone in Northern Arizona. It benefits our local communities, benefits the state. And even our country, when we go on our trips to NACO, National Association of Counties, and we speak to our congressional delegation in Washington DC. They listen because we're good at what we do and we make it all better. The most beautiful country, the most beautiful county, second largest in the continental United States, the most beautiful with the most beautiful people in it. So public service, it's what we do, right? And so we'll, we'll stand ready to forge forward. So thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And as I was listening to the reflections of, of both of your service, I just think it's such a cool story that both of you really started at the front lines. Worked your way up to become county manager. And so to have our current county manager hand off the keys to our future county manager and both of you having gone through that experience, that's just a testament to both of you and your public service. And we thank you and we're grateful that you will be a part of that, that transition moving forward. Thank you. Are there any other comments by board members at this time or are we good? All right. In that case, congratulations to both of you. Thank you to both of you and.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.